And now, a workshop of the McAllen City Commission. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, all workshops are open to the public. These sessions provide an opportunity for city staff to present detailed information and updates to the city commission in preparation for future action or decisions. No formal votes are taken during workshops. They serve as an important step in the city's policymaking process.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to today's workshop. We'll begin today with, do we have any questions to staff regarding our next meeting?
No questions, John, Mayor.
No? Okay, item number two, budget wrap-up, 2526.
Yeah, Mayor, if it's okay with you and the city commission, rather than handling the wrap-up at a special meeting tomorrow, we thought we could take care of it today. You'll notice in your, in the pamphlets that were handed out to you, the revised general fund summary based upon our workshops with you. We'll have a beginning fund balance for the 2526 year of $101,587,640. Proposed total revenues, $171,194,36. There were two changes, revenues. We do estimate two potential increases, and that is property tax revenue of $462,939 and $100,000 of state mixed drink tax, so revised revenues of $562,939. Total resources then would, for next budget year, $273,344,615. You'll see in the next section there revised expenses. We did wrap up meeting collective bargaining with FIRE yesterday. We'll have some more information for you on that. But we are including a proposed appropriation to cover the cost of the new contract there of $462,934. So total appropriations, $170,922,992, leaving revenue over expenses of $833,983, 238 days of working capital.
How many again, I'm sorry?
Two thirty-eight. Our minimum is one forty.
Yes.
And you'll notice on the next page there, there was comment, conversation during the discussion with Convention Center about the request for the SkyTrak. And so, we are able to budget that. So we added the SkyTrak construction equipment. And so you'll see total resources remain constant from what we presented to you at Total appropriations of $9,4,507 with a proposed fund balance, revised fund balance of $8,185,867. And I think that will capture all of the comments we received from the commission. If there are no questions, we are prepared to show you schematic design proposal for the city hall expansion.
Any questions, comments on the wrap-up?
No questions, Mayor.
Questions, all good.
And once again, thanks to the whole team for the budget. Takes a lot of work, and actually, I think it went pretty smooth. So thank you all so much.
It was a great first experience. I would like to echo the sentiments of the mayor, Angie, Sonia, our budget director, finance director, the management team, certainly, and all of our directors here at the city made the process very, very easy this year. So we appreciate all the input that we received from them. And Mayor, if it's okay, then we would present to you an update on the schematic design for new city hall expansion.
Sure.
Mayor Barlow?
City manager, mayor, and commission. While I make introductions, this mouse will show up a little buildup of the city hall. But with me, as you know, we have Milnet Architecture, Rudy Molina. Rudy's, we've been working with Rudy on this project where it's schematic design. We're going to present that to you today. As part of the schematic design, we've met with over sixteen, seventeen departments to kind of go back because the original thought was to have city hall redone right behind here on the north side. We've gone and changed focus, and we're putting that across the street. And so, we had to go back and do a little bit of programming with the departments and make sure that we were meeting all those needs. Another thing that we did during this pre-programming before we got in SDs is to meet with our police chief in the police department to look at security measures and make sure that that's at the forefront of what we're doing. There was a lot of valuable information that we got out of that meeting. We incorporated that into the schematic design. In particular, as we go through this, you'll see that some of the windows are elevated. There's different elevation changes that were recommended, different barriers that you can't really tell, but were taken into consideration by Mr. Molina and his team. And I think that having that at the forefront has helped to not make it an obstacle as we get down to DDs and our construction drawings. But as we go through that, I'm going to take you to the plans. And I'm going to go fairly quick as I'm trying to keep this to about a fifteen-minute presentation. So when we go through schematic design, I'll have to flip the page myself. There we go. And so you got, you can see the outside of the, that is not my second page. I still got to flip it to this? There we go. So I'm already three pages in, but so I, I'll show you, we'll show you a rendition at the end. We have a video. But this is the first, this is the floor plan. We had, we have 46,790 square feet here in this city hall. This proposal has, at SDs right now, we have 105,812 programmed in the building. When we did the preliminary program, we were shooting for $98,600. We're still working on that, make sure that we stay within budget. Currently, we have this programmed at about $400 a square foot. We think as we go through SDs and DSDs, that will build up to about 460. We'll continue to work and make sure that we make budget top priority of this. But we did have, we did present what we had as the opinion of probable cost in your packet. Here, you get an overview of that first floor. You can see the chambers. What we'd like, what you'd like to see there is you're elevated. That gives some elevation change for the chamber. There's a pre-room for, there's a pre-room as you get in where you can have a little conference. You have an executive boardroom area here. Some of the other things that we did during the pre-programming is during weekend and hours, the first and second floor are for the public, so you can roam securities there. But as you can tell, you can walk in, and you can come here to the tax office, the different buildings that you need to interact with people. But at the same time, if you need to close these off during the weekends, we have another drawing here that will show where you can circulate. And we'll go through that here. You can kind of get an idea on this first floor. It's a little bit of a blow-up, but you would walk in through these doors, and this area is where you can interact with the public. Shows the access to the second floor. If you come in on the west side, it goes through the different accesses. Here's the circulation plan from the main entrance. You can see we highlight how you get to different areas, you come in through the area. And so just to kind of see how the first floor would flow for the public, you have a good concept of that.
The check-in is still the required, present your ID, get your badge and all that?
Yes, sir. We do have lobby area for that. So someone would check in your badge. We took into that consideration. We've met with the departments. But then we have different circulation. As you can tell, like on a weekend, you would come in, and this is the only area that you can be. And so we have an area that could get closed. You would close this, and you would only be in the public areas. Let's say you had passports on a Saturday, or you wanted to take taxes on a Saturday. These are the departments that at times have weekend hours. And so, we've made sure that there's an operation where city hall could still be opened up. The public is still there as we were considering incorporating these departments. Again, this is just a 3D layout of what that would look like. You know, I think it was very beneficial to go meet with the departments. Rudy and his team worked on figuring out how we could keep that operation and still have time to have a weekend without not, without giving everybody access to all five floors. When we look at the second floor, we still have some departments that interact with either city employees or the public. So you could come up the stairs. You have human resource, a multipurpose room, future growth. I think here you look over the top of city hall, right? But it's not, is it open air?
Yeah, it's in the chambers.
It's in the chambers. And then you have employee benefits, risk management. So as you can tell, these departments that are on the second floor still have some interaction, some with the public, some with employees. And so you could be able to go back and forth. Did you want to add something?
Yeah, and each, each suite basically has a check-in. So you have...
Sorry. Each suite has a check-in, so you have a secondary security. You have one at the first floor, and then once you go up, before you can enter, let's say, they have a check-in there as well.
Standard for each department.
Okay.
As we move on, you see the 3D rendering of what the second floor would look like. You can see what the overview is. Just gives you a good, a good visual in a 3D sense from the 2D plan. When we look at the third floor, now we're talking about departments that are more internal to the city. And so, access is less limited. You know, you can go get your guest and bring them up if you did have a guest, some type of meeting, or security could, as of right now, they badge you, and that, that gives you access through the elevator. And so that can get worked out. But there's a measure where we try to make, make an effort to get the departments that are internal to be a little separated. And so it's kind of phased as you go up the, up city hall. Did you want to add anything on this slide, Rudy?
No.
On this floor, there's no staircase, correct?
Not, not a central one, but there's one at either end for the employees, yeah.
Got it.
And also for FIRE.
Emergency.
You'll get the 3D layout here. Again, one of the features, and maybe Rudy can talk about this feature in the center, what we're trying to get, but you have kind of like an atrium, and then it has a skylight at the top. We've talked about making sure that that's done, the constructibility is, we're not going to have water issues, things like that. And so we're already putting those in the SDs as part of that. We think it's a really neat feature. As we go through this, I'll let Rudy kind of talk about that a little more unless you want to highlight that right now, Rudy.
Yeah, it's basically an atrium space that serves as a light well. So you'll always have natural light pouring into the center of the building. But rather than have a skylight which could get water, we have a clear store. A clear store, which is, means you have the windows around, but we'll see that as we go up.
How high would that be?
That's on top of the fifth floor. And we'll have a section, so you'll be able to see the whole building with that on there.
And it'll get from the fifth floor, you get?
The light coming in. Yes. And it also gives you a kind of a time of day as the sun is traveling around, because you've got windows on all the sides. So it gives you that shadow, exactly.
So one of the things we were, when we met with city manager, was lighting was important. And so if you have an internal office, you could still get that natural daylight even to the, in the center. And so, just something that we...
Is there, is there a building somewhere in Texas that has that feature? We could see it.
I don't know about...
We're not going to make a special trip for it, okay? The mayor, say, is there?
The atrium, yes. The clear story, I'm not too sure. But that's, that's your typical cathedral in Europe and everything. They always have the clear story with the dome. And here, we're going to have a baby dome on the inside, and the outside will be a flat roof. But on the inside, we'll have a slight dome.
Natural light.
Yes.
Natural light.
Natural light.
And so here, when we get into the fourth floor, is again, it's still continuing the theme where the departments that we're trying to put in there are internal. One of the things that, as you take this home, we have is you have the projection for the required current employees, the ten-year projection, and the twenty-year projection. And so part of the goal when we were looking at this new city hall building was making sure we met the current needs, then the midterm needs, and the long-term needs so that this building could last into the future. Anything?
Oh, we went too far.
Here again, you'll see the, the fourth floor in a 3D rendering. As you can tell, we're using less of the footprint of the building. It's, it's kind of going up. When you start looking at the outside, you'll see the facade, and it gives you a little bit of texture to the building. And so it's just not a square building. When we look at the fifth floor, this is where we have the city manager, city attorney. And I want to highlight that because as you go up through the floors, even at the bottom, you have the different departments that you interact. So in one of the floors, you have finance, purchasing. Here, you have the city manager, the city attorney. And so we try to put operations that, that are congruent with each other and make sure that they're as close to the same floor as possible. That was one of the goals when we were doing this. Anything on the fifth floor, Rudy, that you want me to add?
No, just that the atrium space gets smaller, so we're using less and less real estate as you go up, and to help you create that little dome effect at the final top.
Here, you have the 3D rendering. You can kind of see the outside of the building, the facade. One of the things that we'll go... What would you call that, Rudy?
Public space.
A plaza.
A plaza.
And we think that kind of connects. It may, instead of trying to put a skyway, this kind of puts that, that connection to this building. We could bring it in closer, and so the walk's not as far. Some of the shading, we're hoping can be done through trees and things like that so that instead of putting a structure, maybe just the natural resources can help cool and make that walk a little easier. But as we look at it, it'll, it'll have a look, and I'll let Rudy expand on that.
No, and the plaza also serves some safety issues that Chief brought up. It helps distance some of the cars from the front of the building. It also, because the building's elevated and you have all the planters, the planters serve as buffers from a car coming in and crashing into the building. The staff parking will be secured as well as the commissioner parking, which is secured with a wall.
Here's just the flat view of the roof.
There you go.
A 3D rendering of the building.
Yeah, the box probably isn't going to be a clear story. That's where your chiller goes. We just had to make the space so that the engineer would know structurally that he has to have chillers there.
The benefits or the, or the pros and cons of having a chiller up there?
It's, it's more protected for vandalism, and it's more efficient to run the pipes from the top. And currently, that's the way this, this building is.
I know it is. I know this building is this way, but there are chillers that are on the surface.
Yes, yeah, we've done smaller chillers. We've, we've done on the floor. But protection-wise, this is probably the most, just to keep from people that want to take the copper, things like that.
To what?
People that want to steal the copper and things like that. It's, it's more protected up above.
And that's why you would, well, I just...
It's something we can look at.
We can, we can look at putting it down. We have the room where we have the, we have the room and the parking lot. Right now, currently, we have the backup generator there, but we may have enough room, but we have to get with the, because all they do is run the pipes underground and then go up. So we can look at that.
Is that a type of piece of equipment that would, in its useful life, or rather have a useful life that would need to be replaced?
It's usually twenty to twenty-five years, yes.
Right?
Yeah.
I bring that up because county court, I'm sorry, the county annex number three, which is where my DA office is located, they've had to replace that. And of course, that's a, I guess like a forty, fifty-year-old, forty-year-old building.
No, it's every twenty, twenty to twenty-five years after...
And they had to bring in a crane and pull it all off, and then put another one. So I think it's kind of getting to what Commissioner Geiger's getting to.
Yeah, we did that in...
Operations is so much better on the surface.
Right.
And, and, I mean, you could also protect it a lot better also. Because up there, you'd better put a shade or, you know...
Yeah, no. It won't be shaded.
It won't be great.
Yeah, it will not be shaded up there. It'll just be screened, but we can look into that.
It's out of my league, but I have to tell you.
No, we can check with the, we can check. Structurally, we have a waffle.
Got it.
There's two.
There's two.
We have a small office, and then we have one with two that we also call it like a safe room. So if something happens, the commissioners can go in there.
Okay.
And that was in the chambers, right?
Yeah, that's behind the chamber, behind the dais.
Oh, okay.
Directly behind the dais, yes.
So I'm just going to go through these fairly quick. If you want me to stop on any, we can continue the discussion, and if there's questions. There are going to be pictures of the exterior and the interior. This is just some renderings, how it could look with the lighting at night, during the day. This would be out of the parking space for the commissioners. Here's another view looking north, so that's the south of the building. That's what it could look like at night. Interior sections and renderings. And so this is the chamber. You want to go through that, Rudy?
No, just that the room is, yeah. That's one room right there.
This is that little press area that we, we thought is just a good space to have small little press conferences if you need it. Has the background. It's set up, easy to work from. Here you have the dais. You have some space for city secretary, our assistant city managers, city management at the, at the top as well. Here's another rendering of what the chamber looks like. Here's the sections of the five levels in the roof. Just kind of gives you a cut-through view. Here's looking at the atrium up, and gives you a visual of how that can look with the lattice-type treatment as it, as it goes up to the top. Here's a view from one of the floors. Conference room, some of the, kind of keeping the theme of the atrium. And then here's some QR codes. Maybe Rudy, you want to talk about those QR codes a little bit before?
Yeah, they're just QR codes that you take your camera, it'll take you to a virtual walkthrough, and there's the steps of how to do it, if you, if you want to do it. And it's for the pedestrian plaza, the lobby, and the city commissioners' chambers.
So you get it with your phone, you'll have it on your phone, and you can kind of move around, and it'll give you a 3D rendering. It's really cool. Just gives you an idea of what it'll look like. Yeah, if you take the picture, it gives you...
We don't have it in our package, but if you can send it to us, it would be great.
Okay. I'll get, I'll get this if it's not in your packet. I'll make sure we get it on a Friday highlight.
That's interesting, yeah.
Yes, sir. I wanted, before we close this out, I just have a, a video, and I'm trying to, how do I get out of this, Jim Bob? If I can do number three.
Three-minute video.
This is the commissioner's parking area. This would be looking north, so this is the south side of the building. This is the white parking lot. So the, the things you can see here is Houston Avenue. This would be with the north side of the building, the plan. That's very nice. So one of the things as you go through the, the plan drawings is you'll notice there's a lot of meeting space. That's one of the things here at city hall that we, we got back from all the customers or our departments, is that they needed more meeting space. And so, one of the things that they, you'll see incorporated in different areas all through the five floors, is enough meeting space to make sure that we're able to conduct that business that we need for the community. I think, I think that was beneficial. If you have any last questions, we'll open it up. If not...
I just have two real quick questions or observations. I couldn't help to notice that on the emergency staircases, is that all glass?
Right now it is, but it doesn't have to be.
Especially on the west side. I mean, that's a heat box.
Yes. And, and on the south side, we tried to put some screens, but I don't think they came through.
Okay.
Because you're going to have all that sun on that, that south side.
Right. I think on the east, you're okay, right? But on the west, I think that's going to be really, really, really hot.
Yeah.
The other observation is, I think this is a very good opportunity, especially, well, I refer to now as government plaza, an opportunity for public art. And that's something that we've talked about over time. And I'm not talking about getting somebody hurt. I'm talking about getting residents, either from McAllen or from the county or from the RGB, to demonstrate their work, whether it be through IMAS and rotating every year or six months or something, where it changes and, right? And you kind of, through subtle changes, change the entire look of the plaza with rotating art or something to that effect. Or maybe have one or two permanent, you know, fixtures, right? Something that really defines us, which is something that I always go back to, which I go back to the airport. We spend a lot of time talking about cultural identity. I think this is a great opportunity, because this is the type of building you only might build once in a lifetime. For some of us, we're going to see it twice. Another good opportunity to identify who we are as a people. And so when people come from out of town and they come for business here and they have to go to city hall, they can immediately identify who we are, just simply by art. Because without words, it describes who we can, or who we are.
I think that's a good suggestion.
To JJ's point, I was going to point out something similar. It's not in the pictures, but I noticed in there on the lead-up to the main entrance, there was a fountain. Just fountains, to me, high maintenance, high cost, very common, not as impressive maybe as they used to be. Just kind of people just walk around them. And I thought that would be a good spot for when you go to like, now you go to Convention Center... now you go to convention centers and kind of downtown districts and they use kind of big open spaces like that for very large art, large sculptures, traveling art.
Very modern sculptures.
Very modern art. Or it can be utilized differently. I, personally, I just wouldn't want a fountain. I, I worry about what they end up with in five, 10, 12 years and then bare minimum is done to kind of keep them running, right?
Right.
I think if you ask convention center, they're, they're expensive to maintain and so.
That's right.
That's a good comment and we, we can make that.
For City Hall.
We can make that adjustment. We can bring back some.
And the only, the only other item I was going to bring up is a super heavy emphasis on the floor plans, layout, functionality, flow. I think that's great. I would like to see, even if it's very small, minute changes, options for the exterior, because we only saw really one option. And I know, I know that's probably kind of a base concept, right? We're very early in the stages. But I'd like to see how, how the, the exterior could also have a little more regional tie, have a little bit of more kind of, you know, give it like kind of a, make it something signature from McAllen. It looked a little apartment complex-y to me, right? Because it's, it's very symmetrical and the square windows. I think this City Hall has, the windows are kind of oval at the top.
Oval at the top.
And there's a little accent piece in the center, you know, and I know the, the template of this building is probably not the best kind of inspiration to, to try to complement each other, but it does have some, some small details that could be tied in, I think, to make them, to make them kind of.
Talk to each other.
Yeah, look like one cohesive center.
I, what would be the best format to bring that back to? I think that's probably important, how the exterior could look.
We'll work through that. Depending on, depending on how much it is, we'll, we'll get the information to the commission, but we'll need to bring options back on another workshop. So we'll, we'll definitely bring you options and we'll want more feedback. You're right, this is preliminary first.
Correct.
First draft.
There's a lot of concrete also.
Yeah, a lot of concrete.
Up front, there was a tremendous amount of concrete.
So more green area.
Or stone, a stone garden, you know, just make it where you cover it, you know, with zero scape or something.
I, I have one question. Are you going to use any of the existing furniture or are you going to buy all new furniture for this building?
We were hoping to get a new furniture package with this. We don't have that programmed in the 43 or 42, it was under 43, 42. But that would be the goal. You have a new building, you bring in a new furniture package with that.
Commissioner, knowing, knowing that this project is in the works, I denied all of the requests for new furniture for this building. Knowing that we would probably be buying some new furniture soon.
Are we going to have like, like a cafeteria for the employees or break room or?
There's, there's one for. There's one on each floor. Yeah, there's a lounge on each floor there. And then there's a cafe on the first floor, mainly because you're going to have the vitals and the passports people. So it's a large one in the corner there.
We had talked about possibly a little gym.
There's a gym on the fourth floor.
It's on the third or fourth floor.
Can we take a look at it real quick?
Absolutely.
I saw that.
We want you guys walking.
That's where your office will be, JJ.
Right in the middle.
Near the restaurant.
Right there.
In the middle.
So here's, here's one of the cafes. This is the larger one on the first floor. Lounge is up here, stacking up all the way on each floor.
Okay, and, and is there, is there plans on this existing building of how it's going to be used?
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll consolidate departments here. And then I have not had conversations with some other departments that, that might want to stay here and operate from here. So yes, the objective would be to consolidate operations as much as possible to the new building and then this building as well.
And for the community to be able to take care of business in.
All in one place.
All in one place.
Yes, sir.
And, and for us to be much more efficient.
Yes, sir.
So I think that's in time, in the months to come, that's, that message needs to be.
We definitely want to see an increase in the community's ability to efficiently engage with us and move their projects as easily as possible without having to drive from one location to another.
Correct. Was the development center going to be inevitably either moved to this building?
Yes, sir.
It is, okay. So kind of along with the vision, this is more directed to city management, is as much as I love the flying M, that flying M, the blue one behind you, came in around the same time that this building was dedicated. And since we're looking at a new vision, a new look for McAllen, it's very small, it's a minor detail. But that has had a very, to me, a very large impact for the last 30, 40 years. And as we evolve and mature and get more sophisticated in the city, maybe it's time, just to briefly, briefly look at it, to reinvent and regenerate a new look of how people perceive and look at McAllen with a pick-up letterhead, pick-up envelope. Also, that goes to the branding of the building on the outside. When you start thinking about what logo do you want to hang? What the, the font, you know. I, I think again, the flying M, to me, that's what I refer to it, was brilliant back for the 90s. You know, I think it's one more time, an opportunity to show that brilliance again.
Yeah, I, I think the point is well taken. We're always looking to freshen our brand. And as part of the development of this project, we will certainly bring you concepts to look at and we'll look for your feedback to guide the ultimate decisions that are made. So we'll definitely bring that to you.
Thank you.
We'd have to change our pens though.
This is true.
I looked at the, there was a beautiful channel here in the, in the chambers. That you all take into account the, I guess, the lighting, all this stuff and stuff.
Yes, no, we're, we're working with the communication department here and I, to get that in there with our engineer as well.
Good, good. Any other questions?
Looks good. It's a really good start.
Good job, yeah.
Go Rudy.
Very nice.
We'll have recess into executive session.
Thank you.
This concludes the workshop of the McAllen City Commission. Workshops are held on the second and fourth Monday of each month at 4:00 PM in the City Commission Chamber, located on the third floor of McAllen City Hall. The public is always welcome to attend or view online. Thank you for staying informed and engaged with the city of McAllen.